I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
Jared, please take roll.
Mr. Bickowski. Mr. Bada.
Here.
Mr. Embrasia.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Oh.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Last one all the time.
Mr. Fatoulas, are you along us?
Thank you.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Hold on.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
At the moment, we have 13 members present.
We'll begin with proclamation slash certificates, 13718-25.
A proclamation recognizing Mount Lebanon Public Library on receiving the Pennsylvania Library Association Library of the Year Award sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck.
So with me this evening, I have Robin Vitek, the Director of Mount Lebanon Library, as well as Bob Taylor, the Director of their Board of Trustees. Today, we're going to be presenting Mount Lebanon Public Library with a proclamation on recognition of being named the Library of the Year in Pennsylvania. And if you've never been to Mount Lebanon's library before, it really is a fantastic library. You know, even being a Bethel Park resident myself, I regularly go there just because of all the amazing programs they have to offer and the resources they have available. But one thing that I want to specifically call out that I think is really impressive here is the fact that Mount Lebanon recently became the first library in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to become a book sanctuary. Obviously, a lot of us are familiar with a lot of the efforts we've seen across the country to ban different books and attacks on our First Amendment rights. So I think it's fantastic that Mount Lebanon is taking such a proactive step to make sure that books that meet their standards are not removed from the library and that people have access to all sorts of different types of literature. Without further ado, whereas Mount Lebanon Public Library has been named Pennsylvania's Library of the Year by the Pennsylvania Library Association and is the first library in Allegheny County and in the Pittsburgh region to receive the honor, which was first given in 2018, the Mount Lebanon Public Library was given the award for its leadership, its service within the PA Library Association, and for the steps it has taken to protect access to information. And whereas, since first welcoming patrons in November of 1932, Mount Lebanon Public Library has grown into a vibrant civic resource for its 34,000 resident community, now achieving a 56% active cardholder rate, demonstrating its deep connection with the people it serves. And whereas, in 2024, the library circulated more than 764,000 physical and electronic items and held narrowly 1,500 programs attended by over 35,000 participants, a 45% increase in program attendance from the prior year while answering over 23,000 reference questions reflecting the dedication of its staff and the vitality of the library. And whereas, Mount Lebanon Public Library demonstrates leadership in its workforce by supporting staff participation and statewide professional development with its directors serving as second vice presidents of the PA Library Association and chairing the 2025 PA Library Association Annual Conference. And whereas, Mount Lebanon Public Library proved itself a leader for libraries across Pennsylvania when on February 18, 2025, its Board of Trustees passed a resolution declaring the Mount Lebanon Public Library a book sanctuary, the first library in the Commonwealth to do so. As a book sanctuary, the library director and the Board of Trustees refused to condone the removal or relocation of materials from the library's collection that otherwise meet the standards set by the Board. By taking this brave stance, they ensured that all patrons would see their viewpoints represented in the library's collection. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Dan Grisbeck, do hereby congratulate the Mount Lebanon Public Library on receiving the 2025 PA Library Association Library of the Year Award, commend its staff, trustees, volunteers, and leadership for their vision and service, and looks forward to the continued role of this distinguished library as a model of excellence, access, and community partnership. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. It's a tremendous honor to be recognized in Allegheny County by our fellow residents. We are so appreciative of the county's support, especially through the Regional Asset District and all the funding, and just really great goodwill that they provide for libraries in the county of Allegheny. So thank you so much.
Before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Mr. Klein is now present. 13720-25 is a proclamation commending Officer John Gilliland for his continued dedication to the safety and well-being of others within the Allegheny County Jail, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
And Hallam needs to be added.
And Ms. Hallam.
Me too, sir.
Macy, as well.
Me too.
Nakarati-Chapkus. Everyone, I guess, unless...
Does anyone not want to be added?
It's about time I get to give you one of these.
Yeah, right.
All right, everybody. I am so excited to present this proclamation today. And again, everyone knows that if I'm giving a proclamation, I hate them. And so I only give them when it is truly deserved and for something actually incredible, which your actions were. So the jail gets a lot of hate in the media and even from me personally, right? But a lot of good things happen there as well. There are lives that are saved. There are people who are set on a path forward towards rehabilitation and reintegration into community. And I know truly, one of the hardest jobs in the entire world is being a correctional officer at any facility, but especially the Allegheny County Jail. If anyone out there wants to work at the jail, we are understaffed and we want you. So thank you for everything you've done, but especially for what we're here to recognize you for today. A proclamation recognizing Officer John Gilliland. Whereas correctional officers have the difficult and often dangerous job of ensuring custody, safety, and well-being of incarcerated individuals. Their position is essential to day-to-day operations of the institution, and without these individuals, it would be impossible to achieve institutional goals and success. This profession is of the utmost importance to the safety of Allegheny County, and without their bravery and skill set, the county's correctional system would not function. And whereas Allegheny County is always grateful for the contributions of those who make a difference, and one of those individuals is standing right next to me, Officer John Gilliland. And whereas Officer Gilliland joined the Allegheny County Jail in 2012, earning the respect of his colleagues throughout his professionalism, dedication, and calm leadership while ensuring the safety and well-being of those around him. And whereas, on October 28, 2025, while performing a routine medication pass, Officer Gilliland became aware of an incarcerated individual that had made a concerning statement to a medical staff member indicating potential self-harm. And Officer Gilliland informed 5D. And whereas, recognizing the seriousness of the situation, Officer Gilliland immediately began to monitor the individual's behavior and acted without hesitation when the individual attempted to tie his uniform pants around his neck and climb over the upper tier railing directly above the officer's desk. And whereas, displaying extraordinary presence of mind, Officer Gilliland called for assistance while running towards the individual, successfully grabbing him as he was three-quarters of the way over the railing and pulling him to safety, an act that undoubtedly prevented severe injury and possible loss of life. And whereas, Officer Gilliland's quick and selfless actions reflect the highest standards of duty, compassion, and vigilance expected of Allegheny County's correctional professionals and demonstrate a true commitment to the preservation of human life. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Allegheny County Councilmember Bethany Hallam, and now all of my colleagues on county council, do hereby commend you for your decisive actions and for your continued dedication to the safety and well-being of others within the Allegheny County Jail. We owe you and all correctional officers a debt of gratitude for ensuring the safety and well-being of all incarcerated individuals. And witness whereof, I have hereon two, cause the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this 18th day of November, 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank my family for being here, my wife, my two grandsons that are my life right now, make me feel younger to do younger things. My best friend and my niece is here. I know I told the warden that I was just doing my job. I said that many times in the jail. I would do it all over again if I seen anybody else trying to do this, one of you, anybody, anywhere, I would do it all over again. And I do believe that everybody in this room would probably do the same. Thank you very much.
If you want to give out the jury.
You live for moments like this. Not up.
A proclamation declaring November 22, 2025, is National Adoption Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
We're going back, since the judge is here. We'll go to you next, Paul.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here with the administrative judge of the Family Division who's going to accept this proclamation. I hope share a few words when I'm done reading it, if that's okay. Okay, wonderful. And this is the wrong one. I am here with Judge Hensgreco, and she will be accepting this and putting everything back together here. Thank you. Whereas National Adoption Day is a collective nationwide effort to raise awareness about the thousands of children in foster care who are waiting to find permanent, loving families and to celebrate all those who open their homes and hearts to children through adoption. And whereas each year, the Allegheny County Children's Court proudly participates in National Adoption Day, joining jurisdictions across the country in finalizing adoptions, honoring adoptive families, and highlighting the critical need for permanency for children in foster care. And whereas, on November 22, 2025, Allegheny County will recognize National Adoption Day once again, marking a joyful and transformative occasion during which 23 children in our county will be adopted into permanent, stable, and loving homes. And whereas, from October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025, Allegheny County finalized Reflecting the tireless commitment of caseworkers, judges, court staff, service providers, foster parents, and community partners who work every day to ensure that children find safety, stability, and support of families. And whereas, adoption transforms lives, strengthening families, nurturing hope, and creating new beginnings for children who deserve the love, the belonging, and the opportunity that a permanent family provides. And whereas, National Adoption Day also raises awareness of the ongoing need for adoptive families and celebrates the individuals and organizations in Allegheny County who champion the well-being of our children, including the Children's Court, the Department of Human Services, the Office of Children, Youth, and Families, adoption agencies, and countless advocates. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Allegheny County Council, do hereby proclaim November 22, 2025, as National Adoption Day in Allegheny County, honoring the children who are finding permanent homes, the families welcoming them with love, and the professionals and caregivers who dedicate themselves to helping every child find a safe and stable place to call home. And witness whereof, we have caused the seal of the county of Allegheny County to be affixed this 18th day of November, 2025. Thank you so much. Of course, of course, please.
Well, on behalf of my colleagues, my judicial colleagues, and all the staff of Family Division, you may not know that, but there's about 450 staff people. We are so happy on Adoption Day. And as you might know, Family Court's not always a really happy place for the people who come. But on Adoption Day, this was beautifully written, so I want you to just sort of see this picture of children coming in dressed, sometimes all dressed alike. Sometimes families have adopted four or five children from the same family, opened up their homes, and all these children coming in with balloons and so happy to have it finalized. I was a lawyer. I did adoptions, and I know the tension of the family until the judge says the word that the adoption is granted. Their heart is on the line every minute. They care for these children. And once they know a child's coming to them, that child becomes a part of their family and a part of their heart. So I thank county council for recognizing this and for encouraging people to think about opening their homes and their hearts to wonderful children. Thank you all very much.
A proclamation recognizing Kimberly Rivnack upon receiving the 2025 Distinguished Service Award for the Pennsylvania Library Association, sponsored by Councilmember Filiagi.
Good to meet you. By the way, Judge Hensgreco is the heart, soul, and mind of the Family Division, and I regularly feel honored to be in the same room that she's in. So thank you for all you do. So this is being presented by Councilwoman Filiagi. I am not Councilwoman Filiagi. Sometimes I wish I were, but I'm not. And but this evening, we're here to honor Kimberly for the work that she has done, and she is being recognized by the Pennsylvania Library Association. So let me share this declaration with you this evening. Whereas each year, the Pennsylvania Library Association honors the service of their members as well as those community volunteers who go above and beyond the call of duty to support the work of libraries throughout the Commonwealth. And on Tuesday, October 28, 2025, Kimberly Rivnack was recognized for her service to the association with the 2025 Distinguished Service Award. So I would just kind of give a... And oh, by the way, libraries, I think they still matter. So whereas, as the chief operating officer for the Allegheny County Library Association, Kimberly oversees 46 independent libraries with more than 70 locations at a budget of $14 million, serving a population of 1.2 million county residents. The responsibilities related to her day job would no doubt keep anyone sufficiently occupied. However, Kimberly always aspires to do more. And whereas, after moving to Pennsylvania in 2001, Kimberly immediately joined the Pennsylvania Library Association and has been an active member ever since. She quickly accepted a leadership position in the Southwest Chapter, served on multiple conference committees, awards committees, and PA Forward Committees over the years. Through her leadership on the Legislative Committee since 2018, Kimberly has worked with the PA Library Association members from public, academic, and school libraries to promote advocacy for library funding. And whereas, under her direction, the committee launched both the Legislature Information Session for members of the General Assembly and their staff, and a Legislative Town Hall to familiarize members with the budget process and provide talking points and advocacy tips. Successful membership advocacy campaigns with her leadership were achieved with an increase of 9% to the Public Library subsidy in 2019 into 2020, and another 18% increase in 2022 to 2023. And whereas Kimberly's service to the association does not stop at the Legislative Committee, she also provides legislative reports to the Southwest Chapter and Public Library Division at their regular meetings. Filling the role of mentor quite naturally, Kimberly counsels new library professionals through the Pennsylvania Library Association Mentorship Program as well as the PA Library Association's Directors Institute, and currently serves on the Pennsylvania Library Association's Board of Directors. Whereas Kimberly selflessly shares her knowledge, time, and experience to help make Pennsylvania libraries and library services better for all residents. Her efforts have left a lasting impact on many in the library profession and on the Pennsylvania Library Association. Now therefore be it resolved that I, standing in for Allegheny County Councilmember Suzanne Filiagi, do hereby recognize Kimberly Rivnack for her outstanding leadership, dedication, and service to libraries and the people of Pennsylvania, and congratulate her on receiving the 2025 Distinguished Service Award from the Pennsylvania Library Association. In witness thereof, Councilmember Filiagi caused the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed to this recognition today, the 18th of November, 2025. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Would you like to...
Sure, 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 please. I want to say thank you to Councilmember Filiagi and all the members of council. This is a tremendous honor, and I am humbled to be here today in front of you all. First, I want to take a moment to thank council for their support of the Allegheny County Library Association, particularly for funding our youth services and bookmobile programs annually. We could not do the work we do and touch the people throughout the county without your support. In my role at ACTLA, I was incredibly fortunate to work with all 46 of our member libraries and offer them assistance in meeting the needs of our communities. One of my priorities has been to ensure that staff have the tools and resources that they need to lead and inspire. Together, we advocate for our libraries and in turn for our communities. With the support of my headquarters team, I have been able to work with libraries throughout the Commonwealth in this role as well. It is truly a privilege to be able to work with my colleagues from across Pennsylvania to educate and advocate on behalf of libraries. After all, just as we see in Allegheny County, working together makes us stronger. Again, I thank you for this amazing honor.
Okay.
One, two, three. Got it?
A proclamation congratulating Mission of Mercy Pittsburgh for its exemplary service and humanitarian mission, sponsored by councilmembers Fatoulas, Bickowski, Filiagi, Grisbeck, Katina, Paul Mary, Nakarati-Chapkus, and Bada.
Jared, I'd like to be... One up. Both of you. No, 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 no. You're not getting away with this.
Nice try.
Nice try. Didn't work. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the distinct pleasure tonight introducing Brandy Miller, the Executive Director of the Mission of Life, and Keith Young, the Administrative Director.
Mission of Mercy.
Mission of Mercy. Well, it's all the call to care.
There is about life, though, too. It is.
Yeah. Has anybody heard of the Mission of Mercy in this town? Have you heard of it in the news media? Really? You don't know what it is? Wow. Well, this is with the David Lawrence Convention Center. Since the 2017, they treat people for hearing and eye care and dental. No.
I got to get the name out there more.
You know, this is one of the reasons I brought them in tonight, because I've heard about it for years, and I said, well, you know, that's really nice they're doing it. Then I started to realize that the importance of what they do for underprivileged people. And this, I've been on this council for 18 years, and I've never given a proclamation to anybody more deserving than you. Never. To serve that many people, thousands of people every year that are underprivileged, it's just, I'm sorry, I'm emotional. You know, guys, I know I am. He had a $5 bet, I lost. So, I mean, that's, that's just, it's not even opinion. I'm telling you it's for a fact, the fact that this is the most important proclamation we've ever given. It really is. I have to compose myself, sorry. In my eyes, you think of biblical sense, and you think of men that have become saints. And I think of these people as saints of sainthood. I really do. And I think of heaven as church, a big church, real big church. And the saints that do the most good on the earth, they get in the front row. And this group is definitely going to be in the front row in heaven.
I hope just get to the back row.
Yeah. Well, you stole my thunder because I'm going to be in the back row. But it gets worse because I'm going to be back here with the attorneys and the rest of the politicians. Okay? But the good news is I'm still in the church. I'm not in the basement. Where are the ovens at? It's okay, I'm still in church. You know? So I want to give you a little statistics before I read this proclamation. It's probably in there, too, but this year alone, there were 1,816 volunteers, just volunteers. And they served over 2,081 patients in two days. 1,384 were dental care, 650 eye care, 636 herring care. And you ask yourself the question, how did you do it? How did you get all the equipment, the drilling chairs, the eye care on location and serve 2,000 people? It was, the logistics of that is just amazing. And that's why I feel that this is the most important proclamation I've ever given, because this is so deserving of it. So I'm going to read the proclamation because I'm losing it again, so. It'll tell you the bigger story. Sorry. I got to get the paper here. I got the wrong one. That's the proc itself. Whereas, the signature program of Call to Care, Inc., Mission of Mercy...
Whereas, the signature program of Call to Care, Inc., Mission of Mercy, is a free two-day dental vision, hearing clinic that serves individuals of all ages who otherwise might not have access to care due to lack of insurance and experienced financial hardships. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-five, the clinic held on Friday and Saturday, October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, at the David Lawrence Convention Center, brought together just under two thousand volunteers, including the dentists, clinics, obstetricians, ophthalmologists, nurses, imagining, imaging technicians, and other health professionals to narrow the gap of healthcare across the people without, the people without insurance or without coverage or dental vision or hearing care, which are often left out of traditional healthcare plans. Whereas, this signature event serves hundreds of residents from Allegheny County and beyond, offering services such as dental cleaning, fillings, extractions, root canals, x-rays, pediatric dentists, parents with children. Eyeglasses, hearing support with range of searing, the screening and fitting for hearing aids while becoming participants on the first come, first served basis. It ensures a broad access and whereas since its inception in two thousand and seventeen, the clinic has grown significantly, beginning with about six hundred and seventy patients. That was the first year treated during the pandemic. In two thousand, oh, I'm sorry, before the pandemic. In two thousand and twenty-four alone, sixteen hundred and sixty-seven-six patients were treated at a clinic delivering two point three million dollars in services just last year alone. Whereas by providing the free care Mission of Mercy Pittsburgh joins together community, partners, clinical volunteers, and civic leaders in advancing health equity and ensuring that fewer residents go without essential dental vision and hearing or care allowed individuals to find relief and dignity. Whereas, by facilitating access to these critical health services, the Mission of Mercy Pittsburgh not only improves individual lives, addressing pain, hearing loss, and vision impaired, but also supports overwhelm, overwhelmness, overall wellness, and advance health equity throughout Allegheny County and the region. This clinic successfully is anchored in the dedicated efforts of hundreds of volunteers working together to transform lives of just two days of service. Therefore now be it resolved that I, Nick Fatoulas, County Councilman, and all of the members of County Council, we commend you and hope that this continues in the future. And with that, I was so overwhelmed by this event. I had made a donation a couple of weeks ago. I'm doubling it. That was my payer for a couple of months. So I'd like you to say if you were.
Thank you. That was a beautiful introduction, and he told a lot about what Mission of Mercy is, and I'll give you a little bit more on it. But I'm here accepting this proclamation for our leadership team and for the hundreds of volunteers that make this happen every year. We have been doing this, we've been providing free dental, hearing, and eye care since two thousand and seventeen. And over that time, through that time, we've actually treated over eleven thousand patients with eyeglasses, hearing aids, and dental care. Last year, we did almost six hundred and ninety hearing aids, we did six hundred and eighty pairs of hearing, or eyeglasses, and then we treated almost close to fourteen hundred people with dental care. And some of this dental care focuses is serious dental care. I mean, people that haven't seen a dentist in a long time and have ten, twelve, thirteen teeth pulled at once. They don't have that access. And so for us, the group that we treat and we really focus on, we certainly, there's homeless folks that come and see us, but those folks that, you know, they have to make a decision between paying the rent, feeding the kids, or getting dental care. And you know which one falls off all the time. Is that dental care or the hearing care or the eye care? So that's the group that we really focus on with this. And we've really tried to bring a lot of compassion with our event, too. Our feedback actually from patients is ninety-nine percent say they will return next year. So you don't get those kind of stories without really having a lot of compassion. So it's an event that if you are ever personally in need of that or want to share with others, it's something we are actually doing it next year on October sixteenth and seventeenth at the Convention Center, and we'd love to have you there. But we have been referred to by others as the soul of the city. And what I mean by that is, just example, I grew up in Pittsburgh, but I left for fifteen years, and I came back. And I came back because of family and the hills and the change of seasons, a lot of that good stuff. But what I came back mostly for was the warmth and the friendship and the compassion of the people of the city of Pittsburgh. And I can tell you, having done this since two thousand and seventeen, that is what we see with this. We pull together almost, you know, over eighteen hundred volunteers. We've got many of the major corporations donating to this, smaller corporations donating to this. And then we have the media that supports us, and then we now have, hopefully, the City Council supporting us. That's a good thing. So, and then we pull that together and you treat, you know, two thousand and eighty-one patients in a couple of days. That's the caring, that's the compassion of Pittsburgh that comes through to me. And that's why it's so important. So, I mean, we are getting this proclamation, but we don't do this for this reason. We do it because there's such a need in the community for this, and we really want it. We are doing, we are the hands and feet of God, for sure, in doing this. That's why we do it. But we hope, and if you are interested in attending or volunteering, we'd love to have you. This is a plug, it's m o m p g h dot org, all right, if you want to go to do that. But this is a beautiful evening for us, and what you did for us was tremendous, and your donation was just wonderful. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Get the hold of the pro. Okay.
Okay, one, two, three.
One three seven two three dash two five.
A proclamation recognizing the Bulletin on its fiftieth anniversary and its mission to keep Pittsburgh's East End connected and informed, sponsored by Councilmember Bada.
Good evening, everyone. Don't worry, after this, we only have forty-two more proclamations. We'll be good to go. So this is pretty special because I've been here since about May I was appointed, and I've issued, I don't know how many proclamations. Jordan, who puts our proclamations together, I apologize for the number that I issue, but this is the first one that I've ever done in chambers, and I don't think it could go to a more deserving cause. So if you live in East Pittsburgh, in Bloomfield, Lawrenceville, East Liberty, somewhere, you'll probably recognize this, it's the Bulletin. And for fifty years, it has been delivered to people in these neighborhoods for free. It's filled with all sorts of useful information about, you know, everything that's going on. This is the November issue, and I did read some of this already, so. This is Rick Schwartz. He is the Executive Director of the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, which administers the Bulletin. And I'm so happy to be able to issue this proclamation for fifty years of this publication. And how many years have you been Executive Director?
You want to know?
I mean, if you want to say it.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay. Well, thirty-three, only thirty-three years. And honestly.
That's as executive director.
As Executive Director, thirty-three years, so. I mean, honestly, I couldn't imagine a more deserving person for a proclamation. Rick Schwartz has done just a significant job in Garfield especially, and has really turned these neighborhoods around. He's worked miracles in these communities, and, you know, we're very appreciative of that. And when you retire in, what, another thirty-three years? I would love it if council was to recognize you, you know, in particular. But I'll get this proclamation on. Whereas on November first, nineteen seventy-five, at St. Lawrence O'Toole Roman Catholic Church in Garfield, the Reverend Leo Henry gathered parishioners, businesspeople, and residents of the Bloomfield and Garfield neighborhoods. As he observed a community spiraling downward from a decade of physical and economic decline, he felt compelled to do something to address his future. And whereas, using the sale of five dollar membership shares, he made each person a stockholder in this new engine for change. Over five hundred of these shares would be sold in the weeks and months to come, and the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation was officially born in January of nineteen seventy-six. That month, Father Henry also launched the Bloomfield Garfield Bulletin, a community newspaper to promote a spirit of community. With the community behind it, the B G C began work to reverse the neighborhood's decline. And whereas, the Bulletin is one of the few remaining community newspapers in the city of Pittsburgh. In addition to covering the incorporated interrogatories of the B G C, the paper also reports on friendship, Lawrenceville, and East Liberty. And whereas for five decades, the Bulletin has kept our neighbors informed about news, events, people, and initiatives in our neighborhoods, not just a newsletter trumping its own accomplishments, the Bulletin covers a broad range of East End issues and has become a powerful tool for social change and community empowerment. And whereas, the Bulletin's circulation includes approximately thirteen thousand five hundred mail copies every month, and a thousand additional copies are made available for pickup at local businesses and organizations. Also every month, the bite-sized Bulletin e-newsletter is distributed to more than fifteen hundred subscribers, showing its commitment to reaching residents through multiple platforms and formats. And whereas, the readers include East End residents, business owners, government officials, local media members, and community and neighborhood leaders, the Bulletin provides a targeted market for advertisers and community groups looking to connect with residents of the city's East End neighborhoods. Not only has the Bulletin informed readers, but it has also helped to shape and strengthen community awareness, local institutions, and neighborhood identity in Allegheny County. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Jordan Bada, do hereby congratulate the Bulletin on its fiftieth anniversary and commend the editorial staff, volunteers, contributors, advertisers, and readers who have helped sustain this vital production. We celebrate this milestone and reaffirm our support for its mission to keep Pittsburgh's East End connected, informed, and empowered. In witness whereof, I have here and to cause the seal of the county of Allegheny to be affixed this eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Councilman Bada, and thank you for having me here for the proclamation. Last time I was in this room, County Council was voting on the reassessment in Allegheny County. I have a feeling we'll be back sooner than later on that issue. And that was very well-written, by the way, so anytime you want to submit a story for the paper, let us know. Just want to say how important journalism is in the work that we do. The Bulletin is a small part of the Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, but it's an important part. It tries to shine light on what is happening in the community, who is propagating whatever project or program or event that's happening, and the why of the things that are shaping change in our community. And as you know, in that part of the city, there has been a lot of change. There also has been a lot of anxiety about the change. The newspaper is critical to keeping people in the loop, helping them feel that the future belongs to them and not to people that are not yet in our community. And I just want to say that for every community in the city, having some kind of printed piece of news is very important. The newspapers that we've relied on are starting to fade into the distance, and with that, we're going to lose sight of the truth. And that's why we keep this little paper going, because the truth is paramount. That's all I have to say.
And let's go.
You guys scooch into the middle. There he goes. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
One three seven two four dash two five.
A proclamation declaring November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, is Kylie Lynn McDowell Kindness Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Nakareti Chakis.
Each November, this is an especially important proclamation for me to be able to deliver to my friend Lynn Banazak. We are both graduates of Willen Hills High School, very proud graduates, and our paths continue to cross frequently. And as a friend, I've been able to watch Lynn's amazing work in the community thrive year after year, and her persistence, and her tenacity, and her leadership and dedication to the community, and to the school district, and to all those kids in that school district are something that is really hard to repay her in the hours that she has been able to deliver. Tireless, I know, and I'm excited for you to hear a little bit more from her after I read the proclamation. Whereas, one random act of kindness, no matter how small, can change the course of someone's day, restore hope, and create a ripple effect that carries far beyond the moment it occurs. Kindness uplifts communities, strengthens institutions, and empowers both the giver and the recipient. And whereas, by knowing, understanding, and using the power of kindness, we have the ability to send out a positive ripple that can endure over time. Through acts of kindness, dedication to civility, and creating a belongingness for all people, we can promote healthy behavior and positive dynamics within our community. And whereas, Allegheny County Council will join in the Kylie Lynn McDowell Kindness Day to help raise awareness of the value of kindness. Acts of kindness must be extended to one another regardless of social or economic status, education, gender, origin, religious belief, age, lifestyle, or abilities. And whereas, the Kylie Lynn McDowell Foundation is dedicated to honor Kylie's legacy of compassion, authenticity, and friendship. The foundation is dedicated to spreading awareness of kindness throughout the Pittsburgh region and well beyond by promoting positive connections, emotional well-being, and supportive community environments. And whereas, the Kylie Lynn McDowell Foundation has also awarded over one hundred thousand dollars in scholarships, distributed over thirty-three thousand kindness cards globally, shared over three thousand six hundred random acts of kindness, registered over two thousand first-time voters, gifted over two thousand senior yard signs, and facilitated one hundred and seven family bereavement gatherings. And whereas, in honor of Kylie, the Kylie Lynn McDowell Foundation will continue to transform political, social, and economic systems and institutions to create a kinder, more equitable, and just society for all. And whereas, Kylie Lynn McDowell Kindness Day marks the beginning of a season of kindness that extends through the end of two thousand and twenty-five, encouraging sustained acts of compassion, generosity, and community support. This year, residents of Allegheny County are urged to participate in a full week of kindness by practicing intentional acts of kindness each day in honor of this special day. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Michelle Nakareti Chakis, do hereby declare November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to be Kylie Lynn McDowell Kindness Day in Allegheny County. I urge all individuals to join in on a week of kindness and to extend compassion to one another regardless of social or economic status, education, gender, origin, religious belief, age, lifestyle, or abilities. In witness whereof, I have here and to cause the seal of the county of Allegheny County to be affixed this day of eighteen, November, two thousand and twenty-five. Once Wolverine.
Once a Wolverine, always a Wolverine. That's right, that's right. So I just want to thank you all. Thank you, Council, very much. Thank you, Michelle, very much. I'm here representing the Kaylee Lynn McDowell Foundation. Kaylee Lynn McDowell was my niece. She passed away in her senior year of Woodland Hills High School due to a misdiagnosed illness. We were treating her for unspecified disordered eating, and in fact, she had a bowel blockage. And spent 42 days in ICU fighting for her life, passed away just nine days before her 18th birthday, nine days before she could register to vote, which was very important to her. And so I say all of that to say that when you're in the presence of greatness, no matter whether it's a 17-year-old girl named Kaylee, who certainly I have an affinity for because she was the love of my life, you know that you have to make sure that that goodness stays in the present tense, no matter what. And so, the Kaylee Lynn McDowell Foundation works to make sure that young people find bridges amongst each other, they find common ground with one another, and they support one another. In addition to that, registering young people to vote is a very important way to get them to understand that their vote is their voice. And their voice is what? Fashion's the country, the community that we all long to be in. And so I thank you very much for this recognition. I would say that advocacy, and it looks like there's a lot of advocacy in the room tonight, I'm just guessing, I'm just guessing, as the kids at Woodland Hills would say, "Clock it." But advocacy is also a very important part of what we do. You know, women's healthcare research is only 8% of the total amount of NIH research every year. And yet, we are more than 50% of the citizens of this country. When you look at venture capital dollars associated with women's health, we're less than 2% of those investments. And so advocacy itself is very important because without all of us reminding each other about the work that we have to do together, we can't get it done. But let's all do it with civility and make sure that we're making sure that everyone is seen and heard, and that that togetherness is part of what gets us to our next what's next. So thank you very much, very much for this. You get to have an official kindness ambassador t-shirt.
13725-25.
A proclamation recognizing and commending Allegheny County Councilmember Mike Embrazia for his dedication and service to the residents of Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Katina and all other members of council.
Mr. President, Members of Council, it's a pleasure this evening. It's kind of a double-edged sword here. Hate to see Mike go, but yet, by reading this, you'll see what a wonderful person he is and what a great colleague he's been for a short period of time, too short a period of time. So without anything further, Michael, I'm going to read this here. Whereas, Mike Embrazia was appointed to the office in February 2025 and was fully sworn in on February 11th, 2025, where he represented all 1.2 million citizens of Allegheny County. And whereas, during his time serving the residents on County Council, Mike served on several committees, including Assessment Practices, Government Reform, Information Technology and Process Development, and Public Safety Committees, as well as serving as a Chair of the Appointment Review Committee. And whereas, throughout his tenure on County Council, Mike was a co-sponsor on numerous legislations, such as extending the discount period for paying county real estate taxes, a motion to Pennsylvania House Bill 453, which would add 911 calls, talkers, to emergency responders' definition, a motion supporting Pennsylvania House 504, an act providing for community energy facilities, a motion asking Congress to support legislation assisting disabled minors, including increasing black loan benefit rates, and a resolution expressing the intent of Council to provide technical and other assistance to the county's volunteer fire departments. That's only the beginning, folks, this goes on. Whereas, Mike has brought many talents to County Council, including strengths in real estate development, business creation, and company management. He understands the value of engaging stakeholders in collaborating with private businesses, foundations, funders, universities, politicians, and most importantly, the citizens. And whereas, Mike is an executive leader and co-owner at Carnegie Robotics, one of the nation's earliest and largest robotics companies. He oversees corporate growth, partnerships, and helps guide the strategic direction of the renowned company. His leadership helped reshape the company's sales and growth strategy, fostering new relationships with top commercial OEMs, defense contractors, and various groups within the U.S. Department of Defense. You do all of that, I'll tell you. Whereas, prior to Carnegie Robotics, Mike served in various leadership roles in both technology and commercial real estate. Notably, Mike served as Executive Director of the Building Owners and Managers Association of Pittsburgh, one of the nation's largest commercial real estate trade associations. And in 2013, he founded and led tech startup and knows firsthand the struggles of creating and operating a small business. In 2020, he served as Campaign Manager for Pennsylvania State Senator Devlin Robinson, 37th District. And in 2023, Mike was the Republican candidate for Allegheny Council District 5. Despite losing the election, Mike instantly pledged support for his opponent and continued his positive stewardship in community. And whereas, Mike resides with his wife and two young daughters in Mount Lebanon, Pennsylvania. He proudly participates in several nonprofit groups, including the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. He's on board of trustees, the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust, excuse me, the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust at Circles Board, Fifth Conservatory, Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation, Pennsylvania Society, and many more. Now therefore be resolved that Allegheny County Council, on behalf of the citizens of Allegheny County, hereby recognizes the Honorable Mike Embrazia for his contributions to Allegheny County Council and to the enhancement of the well-being of the county's citizens. Mike always acted in the best interest of all the constituents of Allegheny County, and his unwavering commitment to Council serves as an exemplary model of leadership. This Council thanks him for his years of dedicated public service, and we wish him well as he moves on to future endeavors. And witness whereof we have here unto cause the seal of the county of Allegheny County to be affixed on this 18th day of November 2025. Congratulations, Mike.
Oh, there's the photo. Wow, I've never seen that.
And that's why he didn't get one of those blue ones.
Wow.
I'm wearing the same suit.
Go ahead, Mike.
Well, thank you, bittersweet. I want to thank everybody here for coming to my last day. I know you got the invite early. And we got you pizza, okay? So thank you. If there's any leftover, we'll let you know. Thank you, Councilmen, Councilwomen, thank you, friends. I was appointed in February, and it was an interesting time. I believe there was 25 or 30 or so Republicans, or something like that, that threw their hat in the ring. And I wasn't one of them. And I kept getting a call to consider this role. And I was wondering why. And our dear friend Suzanne Filiagi, who's on the phone, met with her in a mall, and she says, "You have to do this." I said, "Well, why? Why do I have to do this?" And she said, "Because your background and your demeanor and just your persona can bridge the gap, can work across the aisle, can collaborate." And that's all I needed to hear. And so I was appointed and damn proud of that. I'm proud of my time here, I'm proud of what we've accomplished. You know, the campaign was a fun one, it was lively, you know, as they all are. But I think if anybody looks back, they'll see that I tried to carry myself and conduct in a manner that is being civil. To our friend who just spoke, who really hit home, to be civil to one another, to be kind. You know, it wasn't out of bounds to open up a social media post, not by my opponent, usually by everybody else, right? To hear and see things written about you that I pray that my daughters never see. You know, Election Day, 12, 14 hours of work in the circuit, being called a racist and a bigot. I was called a fascist, but only three times on Tuesday. All because I have an R after my name. It's called MAGA. Anything but. All wildly false and all very hurtful. But I assure you, to get into this game, you have to have thick skin. And you have to look beyond just yourself. You're there to serve others. And if anything was such a bright spot over these last 10 months, it's been able to engage with you, to be able to meet new folks, regardless of party and race and creed. You know, I think there's people in this audience, actually, I've seen some of them, where I just randomly called you in the evening time. My colleagues don't know that. But there's some people in this audience that hit me up on email, usually about the air permitting fee or some other issue. And I would just call them from my cellphone. And some folks would say, "Is this your council line?" I'd go, "No, this is my personal cellphone." And we would have hour-long discussions. I have people that I've spoken with, that I met in the room, that I've built relationships with. I almost tied Ed's tie out in the hallway. You don't walk into this building looking that way again. So that's what's important. That's what's fun about this, is that it's not about you. You know, John read a whole list of things that I've done in my career. I didn't do this on my own, you kidding me? I didn't, this all sounds fancy. I only did it because I had people that believed in me. I had mentors, I had folks who stuck their neck out for me. I had a team that helped me do it. All I am is just a mouth, right? So if anything, I would say that get involved, you know? Do this. This, you know, sometimes colleagues will roll their eyes, "Oh, my gosh, look at, we have 584 people who want to come in for public comment." But I can tell you that everybody walks out of this room damn happy. Why? Because there's people participating in their government. This experiment of ours is fun, it's pure. It's not always perfect, right? There are three branches here, friends. We have a judicial branch that was representing us this evening. We have an executive branch that we like to spar with all the time. But this right here is your legislative branch, right? And sometimes, we don't always take our legislative branch seriously. I submit to you that this is where a hell of a lot of the work gets done. And to see the amount of interest and excitement here is very powerful. I know we have a long meeting, but I will say that this doesn't get done unless we have the most amazing staff in Ken Varhala, our chief, and Sarah Rocka, and Jared, and our counselor here, of course, Jordan, who is the author of a lot of these wonderful things. I don't think I left anybody out. But recently, I was made aware of, and I think some of us were, that a new person that went onto a new committee, pretty accomplished businessperson, was rude to a few of our staffmates. And I'm not talking rude, I'm talking disrespectful, beyond, just bad. Well, that person's going to be getting a phone call from me. And I'm no longer a councilperson. You know why? Because that's not how we treat each other. That's not how we treat each other. So I'll leave it with this. This is an amazing group of people. I'm not mad that I lost the election, I'm not mad at all. In fact, I wish the best of luck to Alex, and Kathleen, and Erin, and Lisa. They're going to be great. We're going to be here to help them. I'm going to be here to help them. Just because I lost an election doesn't mean I go away. No, it's my civic duty to stay, and to remain, and to challenge them, and to help push them forward, and to give them resources to be successful. If I do hide my head in the sand, find me and shoot me, right? That's not who we are. But this branch right here, this group right here, these are some good people. Dwight Walton's a good man, right? Mr. Stoick, right? He's been great to me since the moment I met him. We're going to go away on a girls' trip, get matching tattoos. It's going to be great. He's my man, right? The most unlikely, and I'm going to leave you with this, this is important, the most unlikeliest of suspects that you would find being friends, and it has nothing to do with political affiliation, nothing at all. It's common ground, it's good debate, it's good discussion, no name-calling, right? I got Bobby Palmeseen up there, who's been with me from the beginning, a mentor, a steward, kicks me around when I need to be kicked. He's a friend, a dear friend. Bobby Macy, I'm sorry, Anita. Paul Klein, Katina. I'd follow that guy through the gates of hell. He's a hell of a president. He's a hell of a president, and he keeps this thing going. Got Dan and Nikki, oh, I love Nick. I love Nick. He doesn't give me checks, but I love Nick. Got Jordan here. How about Bethany? How about it? You know, last thing I'm, yeah, I love that thing. So the final thing I'll say is this. You know, I was on the campaign trail, and everybody wants to say something, because you know predominantly GOP crowds, because a lot of Democratic crowds didn't want to see me. So, "Oh, Bethany Hallen, bah!" Like, yeah, but we're friends. Every step along the way. And I would stand in front of that crowd, and I would stand up, and I would represent what I thought to be right, okay? And I'm going to challenge the team in this room, and challenge all of you. Don't do what everybody says you're supposed to do, all right? I was the GOP Chair of Mount Lebanon. I was the GOP Chair of Mount Lebanon, and I stood up and I said, "I'm going to throw all my weight behind Governor Josh Shapiro." Josh Shapiro had the time to be governor. They ran me out of the room, and I was the chairman. You know why? Because I did what I thought was right. And then the red hats called, and the red hats said, "Hey, we want you to stand before us, we want to launch everything at you because you got behind Josh Shapiro, 170, 180 people with red hats on." I'm the GOP guy. I said, "Yeah, and I'd do it again." Right? Have some courage to do what you think is right, not because of what your party tells you to do, all right? And finally, I'm not supposed to be friends with Bethany. I'm walking out here as the top Republican in all of our county government, and she's the top Democrat. You want to know something? She's going to be my friend for life. Is that right? Thank you for this opportunity.
The remaining proclamations will be read into the record. 13726-25.
A proclamation recognizing the August Wilson African-American Cultural Center on its 15th anniversary and in celebration of August Wilson's 80th birthday, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
13727-25.
A proclamation recognizing Zivion McMillan Taylor for his extraordinary bravery and compassion in coming to the aid of his neighbor, sponsored by Councilmember Nakaretti-Chappas.
13728-25.
A proclamation recognizing Molly Rush on the occasion of her 90th birthday honoring her lifelong dedication to peace, human rights, and equality, sponsored by Councilmember Putzia.
13729. 13729-25.
A proclamation recognizing John Preston Pete Hill for his outstanding contributions to baseball and celebrating the street renaming event on November 10, 2025, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
13730-25.
A proclamation recognizing South Fayette Township Commissioner Rebecca Sray upon receiving the PSATC President's Award for Outstanding Leadership, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
13731-25.
A proclamation recognizing the Gilded Decade Gala and the work of Transuniting, sponsored by Councilmember Bada.
13732-25.
A proclamation recognizing Pittsburgh City Councilmember Teresa Kale Smith for her many years of outstanding public service, sponsored by Councilmember Palmesena.
Thank you. At this point in time, we're going to have public comment on the agenda. So, as you can see, we have a large, very large crowd tonight, and I think it's fair to say that most of you are here about bill numbers 13228-24 and 13229-24. These bills have been pending for over a year at this point. They were actually released from committee previously, but as Mr. Klein noted, it's the most recent appearance ever on our agenda. It appeared very likely that they would fall just short of the 10 votes needed to pass them. I therefore referred both bills back to committee. I believed at this time, and still believe, that this was preferable to running the risk of them failing and everyone having to start all over again from square one. Now, a lot of time and effort has been put into these bills. All of my fellow council members dedicated significant time to them. Our staff and solicitor have spent countless hours in review and discussion. The administration has spent countless hours in review and discussion. The administrations also worked very hard to keep these bills on the front burner throughout a lengthy and sometimes difficult process. All of these people who I talked to personally, or who emailed any one of us on this day this evening about these bills devoted their resources as well. This evening, my sense is that we have finally arrived at a point at which 32228-24 and 13229-24 both have an opportunity to receive the votes necessary to pass. I say that after discussions with many of my colleagues, and I can say that with, I'm pretty certain that that's the case. Probably a 99.9% chance. There's always that little thing that could go wrong, but I don't believe it will. In fact, I believe that Ms. Nakarati Chakis will be withdrawing her alternate air quality fee bill at this time. Correct, Councilwoman?
Correct, President.
Thank you. So her willingness to do that reassures me that I am not alone in my optimism. With all of this in mind, it is my feeling that 13228-24 and 13229-24 have waited more than long enough for their final votes. And I would very much like to proceed to discussion and voting on them to get everyone home and out of this evening's less-than-ideal weather as soon as possible. But we also have about two to three hours' worth of public commenters signed up to speak, and certainly have no desire to tell anyone that they cannot speak. But in order to balance these considerations, we're going to proceed with our normal public comment process. But if you would like to waive your time in order to get the vote done more expeditiously, which I would greatly, really encourage you to do, so we can get the vote done, and we can tell you, and we can basically, rather than wait any longer to get this done, which I would love to pass this this evening, when I call your name, please just raise your hand and say, "Move on to the next person," or say, "Thank you," or what have you. So Councilman Klein, I believe you had something to add.
I would say that what you said really reflects where we'd like to go this evening. So I would say, message received. So, but I would like to offer a few other remarks as well. So this evening, we take up these measures, these two bills that were introduced for council consideration about 13 months ago, in three days and 14 hours and 43 minutes. And in a nod to Jerry Garcia, what a long, strange trip this has been. So rather than delving into the inside baseball particulars of how we got here, or should I say, "Got nowhere," we bring these bills to the floor this evening for the purpose of calling for a very long-awaited vote. For most of the almost 10 years that I have served on this council, we have been listening to the testimonials of the people that we represent in this county, our constituents. They have shared with us their often grim lived experiences in trying to navigate the environmental health challenges that they have faced in trying to keep themselves, their children, their parents, and their communities safe. They have been asking us, urging us, begging us to pay attention, to not turn away from their ordeals. I remember talking to a woman, and this was several years ago, when I was relatively new to council, who told me that she and other parents in her community often felt that in trying to raise children in their community where air quality was so dangerously compromised, her feeling was that it amounted to child abuse. We have also heard from an array of medical, public health, and of course, our many environmental champions, environmental advocates, who have worked tirelessly to ensure that we meet the challenges the impacts of industrial activity in our region might cause. This saga has gone on for too long. People come to us, they come to this body because they need help. These are our neighbors, our friends, our constituents. As elected representatives, we all have our priorities. For me, what is top of mind is the health of the community. And mind you, public health and environmental health are one and the same. If we pass these measures this evening...
When?
Soon.
Yeah.
We will be sending a message, and that message is that here in Allegheny County, public health is a priority, and we are committed to ensuring that our public health department has the resources to do the vital work that is necessary to keep us safe. I trust, I have no doubt, that my colleagues feel much the same way, and that they will demonstrate that this evening by supporting these measures. Thank you.
Again, I ask you, like I said, to try to be as brief as possible so we can actually get to the vote. So the first speaker we have is Kate...
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion that we cut the time to one minute based on the fact that we're voting yes. Speedy time, if somebody happens to grow a little bit, I'm okay with that, but I would like to make a motion to just cut it to a minute so we can be here about an hour's worth of speaking. And I'd like to take that to a vote.
I'd like to hear less than an hour, Nick, if possible, so if we can actually...
Forty-two people, forty-two people are going to take at least an hour. So I want to give them at least a chance to come up and say, "Hey, thanks for getting it done, guys."
It fell off. Is there a second or no? Hearing, no second. Kate Walker?
I'll do it in 30 seconds.
Okay.
It fell off.
I am the Reverend Dr. Kate Walker. I serve the First Unitarian Church of Pittsburgh. I am also the incoming president of Penn. And I came up to take a photo of them. And to say thank you, council, and we hope that our relationship with you continues to be one of joy and celebration for the environmental health of our people.
Nick, do you want anything to say?
I'm gone. Got 45 seconds for you. All right, all right, I'll go quick for everyone here. All right, good evening. My name is Nicholas Bartel, the Clean Air Campaign Manager with Penn Future, an environmental advocacy nonprofit, working here in Allegheny County and across the Commonwealth for clean air, stable climate, and pure water. I want to emphasize, the stories you're going to be hearing this evening show that the data that you've heard from both myself and others in the past are not abstract numbers. They represent real families and real consequences. I want to emphasize that they represent children who rely on inhalers just because of where they live. They represent the smell of rotten eggs entering people's homes during pollution spikes. They represent neighbors who are simply asking for a basic level of fairness and human health. Tonight is a powerful reminder of what democracy looks like. Many of the speakers here maybe are speaking for their first time. They might be nervous. They might worry that they might stumble over their own words, but they showed up anyway because they believe in this process and know that their words matter. I encourage you to listen to every speaker and take their courage to heart, and then vote to fully fund the Health Department so that it has the staff and resources necessary to fund our clean air. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jay Walker? Jay Walker?
Yeah, why don't we...
Okay.
Jay Walker, Tom...
Tom Pike. Arushi Pont. Lillian Chiacocca. Chief, po, chief, Pomaaj.
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 Thank you so much.
Line up.
Is it my turn?
No, we're just lining up five.
Just line up, that's it.
Chief.
Good evening. My name is Jay Ting Walker. I'm an advocacy coordinator at Clean Air Council. Here are my abbreviated comments. ACHD is proposing a solution to the budget deficit, includes raising air pollution permit fees, and the council is supportive of increasing those permit fees to properly reflect the cost of review enforcement. The need for a robust Health Department was recently underscored by the fatal explosion of Creighton cookworks this past August. The Mon Valley US Steel facilities have had numerous malfunctions, fires, and near-misses in recent years. Now, the federal government has defunded the Chemical Safety Board that previously would investigate to determine the root causes of such events. That makes ACHD's capacity to conduct investigations and inspections all the more crucial. Lastly, county council must properly fund ACHD to fulfill its duties as a trustee of Pennsylvania's natural resources under Article I in Section 27 of Pennsylvania's Constitution. Residents are counting on you to meet your obligation and protect their health by voting yes on the pros fee increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. Tom Pike. I'm a resident of Forest Hills in District 10. I work for Clean Air Council, but I'm just here tonight as a resident of District 10. So right down the hill from me, folks live with much worse air, poor folks who can't afford a house in Forest Hills. It doesn't seem right to me that money can buy clean air and that you should have to do that in the first place. So Councilmember Walton, I've seen you stand up for clean air and water in the past. I hope you will again today by voting to fund our Health Department and to help my neighbors down the hill. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your gracious attempt to pronounce my title. Good evening, good evening, councilmembers. My title is Chief Pomaaj Chokmam Yehalahi, and I'm the Advocacy Consultant with Upstream Pittsburgh's Environmental Justice Table. I'm also the Chief of Medicine. I'm a diplomat and a trustee for Atticata Trust, which is an Aboriginal American Indians Not Tax Trust. What I say today will speak volumes for the future generations. It is so important, this moment today. This moment is, will be etched in history. You will be making history, and the future generations will look back and say they thought, they discussed, and they did the right thing. It is this time that you will be remembered for the work. Our future generations haven't even arrived yet, and in our culture, our breath is the first set sign of life, and it is the last sign as we depart. So air and breathing and life are intricate with each other. You're very important in this moment. My Aboriginal American nations are looking and watching what all of the people do in honoring their oath to protect indigenous lands, air, and water, and you're doing that today.
Hi, my name is Lily, and I recently moved to Oakland to be a graduate student at Pitt. And I am here to ask you to support the air quality permit fee increase proposed by the Allegheny County Board of Health to ensure that our Health Department is adequately funded and can protect our families from health risks like cancer, asthma, and other illnesses caused by high air pollution. This bad air quality kills up to 1,000 people each year, and as somebody who's recently had cancer, I don't want my new city to be one of the reasons that I have increased health risks.
I also have some printed comments from someone who couldn't make it today, if those would be able to...
Yeah, just give them.
Thank you.
And I'll be brief. So my name's Arushi Bunth. I'm the Executive Director of Allegheny County Clean Air Now, or ACAN. I just wanted to thank you for voting yes. This is upholding the Clean Air Act. It's protecting public health and frontline communities, and it's just really important to ensure that the rates of cancer, asthma, cardiovascular visits, and ER visits here are dropped. So just want to thank you for protecting the health and well-being of residents in the Noble Island Airshed. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to line up the next seven. Natalie Ford, Karen Sloan, Bella Carlton, Edward Ren, Eric Kramer, Angel Gober, and
All right, hi, I'm Natalie Ford. I'm the environmental justice organizer for 412 Justice, and I just want to thank you all, councilmembers, for being in support of this bill, and more importantly, standing up for Allegheny County's residents, and also our fence-line community residents in Braddock and the Mon Valley. It is time for them to have you in their corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Bella? Not here. Edward?
Hi, Mike, and all. I'm glad that I tied my tie for nothing. I hope that we can see this as not just the end of a process, but an ongoing process to improve our air and our economy at the same time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen, I skipped you, Karen, if you're there. Is Karen there? Karen's not there? Okay. Erin?
Hi, Erin Kramer. I'm the Pennsylvania State Director for Climate Cabinet, and I just wanted to both appreciate the yes vote, but also say it's thrilling to see government actually taking pragmatic, practical steps to solve problems. So funding the Department of Health, yes. Clean air quality, yes. It's all a yes, everybody wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Angel?
I was coming to speak. I took a shower today. Good evening. I just wanted to thank you all for your vote and your support. It's long overdue. We did bring impacted residents that are going to tell their story tonight, so hopefully you allow them to have the full three minutes. It's not an easy journey to get all the way downtown, to stand up in front of you all and give testimony. And Mike, you owe me $240 for that pizza, okay?
Patrick?
Good evening. I'm Patrick Campbell. I'm the Executive Director of the Group Against Smog and Pollution. Simply to say thank you for a yes vote, thank you for finally bringing the ordinance to this point. Please do vote yes, and by voting yes, it's simply complying with the law. It's the Clean Air Act. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next five. Karen Lyons, Howard Rigger, Natasha Washington, Joff Rubinowitz, and Benjamin Chisar. Karen is first.
In Karen's absence, I'm going to speak. My name is Jacqueline Wade, and I'm from the city of Clerton, the US Steel Center. And I would like to say this evening that I am glad that I am, at my age, I ain't going to say it, but have raised six children in the city of Clerton, and I can say tonight from every parent, every politician, every fireman, every ambulance driver, thank you. Thank you for someone who has noticed that we have a sincere issue, and that you have been kind enough and intelligent enough to address it. We have been in a situation of not only blight in our community, but we are trying to build. And I want to ask everybody who sits on county council to please visit our city. Starting in January, we're starting some new things in our city with a new mayor and some new council members. I would like each and every one of you, including Mr. Palmary, who is our actual representative on county council, to come and see what Clerton wants. We're asking everyone to take that step, all council, county council members, to enter to our city and see how we're going to change. Not only will the air pollution and the skills of NIPON and US Steel to make that a cleaner, less even pollution-free meal, we're willing to work with them to rebuild our city and to be proud of where we live, not only because we won't have as much pollution, but we have a new regime of people who care. Please come and visit us, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Howard? Howard? Not here. Natasha? Natasha, sorry.
Y'all didn't have to correct them. Hello, everybody. I'm Natasha Washington. I'm the Campaign Director for the Black Appalachian Coalition, also Wilkinsburg Borough Council Member, but I'm speaking mostly for Black and Black women in general because we are the most impacted people in our community for these environmental hazards. So, I am thankful that I have so many Black women that are speaking and standing by and fighting for this issue, but I really want to take just a second. It's been a long day, and I know it's been a long meeting for you, so can y'all join me in just a quick second of a breath? Didn't I feel good to breathe clean air? It was wonderful, and I thank y'all for continuing to have these standards. We are one of four states that have an environmental rights amendment. We are one of very few counties that can even set our own air quality policies and standards, so we are a special county, and we have the power, and I'm thankful that y'all are sharing this power and being good public servants to work with our community so that we can have clean air. I will admit that in December, when I had my last comments with you all, I was very upset we weren't moving this forward, and I will say with Mr. Periem in passing, I was very upset as well, and then the explosion on August really made me upset, but what kept me calm is that you all kept communicating with us. You all kept showing up. You all kept updating us and letting us know what was going on so we knew how we should act so that we aren't burning ourselves out, so that we can show up for you and say thank you and congratulations, and thank you to all the people that have came out to speak. And I've shared many of your testimonies, and they were wonderful to listen to, so I thank you for showing up for this, what, year-long fight that we've been doing? So, I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to you all for protecting the health of our children, our women, our community, and being the public servants that you were voted in to be, and I know it's budget season, so y'all should also pat yourselves on the back for adding some more money into your budget. Thank you.
Jeff?
Good evening. Joff Frabenowitz, former Deputy Director of the Health Department over the air quality program. I'm just gonna bask in this for a second, if you don't mind. Just, it's been more than 14 months. It's been three and a half years. My second week as I walked in, I won't point anyone out, Kim Joyce says, "You might want to look at your budget and fees. They're not doing well." So, this has been a very long process. I want to thank the council. I want to thank you for voting yes, hopefully, and just a very little bit. As I said, I'm no longer with the Health Department, so I can kind of say whatever I want now, which is really... I had this whole long speech I was gonna lay into people, and now I can't. So, so many spreadsheets I had to deal with, but I'm just gonna say, because they can't come up here and say this, thank you for air quality. Thank you for public health. Thank you for the Health Department supporting them. Thank you for the air quality staff. A lot of people, they get a hard time. This is a dedicated staff that comes in day in, day out, and they do the work. They don't ask for praise. They're going to piss off somebody regardless of what decision they make, and they're very good at that, both making the decisions and pissing people off, but it is important work. This is long-lasting. The air quality in Allegheny County is not perfect. It can improve more, but if you look at the long-term trends, it has gotten much, much better. That's because of the hard work of the people within the Health Department. So, for that, and thank you for your service, I'm gonna sit down now.
We do not inherit the earth from our ancestors. We borrow it from our children. Mr. President, I rise in support of permit fee increases. I'm shocked that it needs to go to operations. I believe it should be going to the Clean Air Fund, particularly for public health benefits in communities affected. Really, what this should be about is another step. You're doing a wonderful thing, but let's go further. Let's put fines on the pollution. Let's get rid of the major polluters in this county. This is part and parcel of a much bigger issue I know you all understand, not destroying the planet in which we want to live. We must stop issuing permits to the 29 major source polluters, and we must make it clear that they are no longer welcome in this county. I don't understand the addiction to industrial pollution from my fellow Democrats, but I'll be nice. We'll be World Kindness Day. But I remind you, this is one of the most polluted counties in the nation. The adverse health impacts are numerous. I've listed them for you in the Board of Health numerous times. It's not just about quality of life or the local economy and jobs. Our pollution does not stay in this region. The fixation and the obsession on pollution leads to a whole host of consequences around the world, and I'd like to remind everyone, how many of the rich, upper-middle-class white neighborhoods are in direct, immediate proximity to the 29 major source polluters versus how many working-class, poor, and community of color that write up against the pollution? There are alternatives to almost every bit of pollution that seems to be facilitated by this council. Allegheny County can be a leader in the world in scaling up these other technologies. Please build us a green new economy. Please build us affordable housing to bring back the population. Please, please shut down the House of Death that is the county jail. Let Bethany and the sheriff redesign a whole new one, and you can build condos where the existing one is. Please remember that air is life, and in this Commonwealth, clean air is a constitutional right. So, thank you kindly for finally taking the first step, in which I hope will be several more. May God bless this county and all who call her home.
Thank you. Angelo, Brendan, Jonathan, Yvonne, and Corey. And if you don't want to speak, that's fine. No one's gonna argue with you.
Thank you for your yes vote.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Corey, you still want to speak?
First off, am I the Brendan you're talking about? Because... Oh, sorry. Okay. So, I live in Forest Hills, so, and I am here in supporting the air quality fee increase. When I moved to the region, the first thing I thought when I moved to the region is it smells like cigarettes constantly.
That's Bethany. I'm sorry.
It's not your fault, Bethany Hallam. Anyway, so, that was the first thing I thought, and so, now, where was I going? But it's not just the smell of cigarettes. It's more, like, 600 to 1,000 people die every year of air, of bad air quality in our county, especially people in Braddock and Clerton and majority Black and Brown communities and that are low-income, working-class communities. I thank you all on council for your persistent discussions and working together to get this legislation passed. I know it's been a long, long time, so, yeah, and hope this goes as well as all of you are saying, and I believe it will.
My name is Corey Roma, and I am speaking on the behalf of the young Democrats of Allegheny County in my capacity as political advocacy co-chair to urge you to adopt all three measures relating to the air permit fee increase. Raising the permit fee would deliver badly-needed funding to the County Health Department, finally giving it the proper resources to protect public health from toxic pollution and keep our residents' air healthy while keeping polluting industries in check at the same time. In both recent and previous election cycles, our organization chose to endorse many of you because our membership believed you would champion solutions to issues that affect young people, and protecting our environment is a top priority to our members and generations young and old living in this county. This is a pivotal moment to prove whether or not our assessments of you are accurate. Please vote yes on the proposals, and thank you.
Thank you. The next five. Larissa, Wanda Wilson, Natalie Morris, Matt Nemeth, and Lisa Graves. And if you don't want to speak, that's fine as well.
I want to speak. Good evening. My name is Natalie Morris, and I'm a proud resident of Braddock. I moved to Braddock in the early 80s. Yes, I was an asthmatic, and I was a cigarette smoker, young and unconcerned about the air pollution, but that was no problem then. In the early 90s, I quit smoking because I found it was getting hard for me to breathe the fresh air that wasn't there anymore, and the air wasn't smelling fresh, and there was a lot of dust, and it was everywhere. And I moved to, now, we're gonna move to 2000. Now, I'm on oxygen. Air pollution is my best enemy. I'm speaking for everyone who has a breathing problem. Please help us, since you said you were gonna pass this. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Wanda Wilson with Penn Environment. Representing our members across the state, we encourage you to vote yes. I'll waste the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Graves-Marcusi, lifelong resident of the Mon Valley, and I want to thank you for listening to us these many, many months, and although we would have liked to have arrived at this moment earlier, we are glad it is here tonight. Council will vote to make important progress to protect the health of Allegheny County in general and the Mon Valley specifically. Council will take the long-awaited step that signals to all of us that our health is a priority, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. Curtis, Theron, Colleen, Alexis, and Kelly? Any one of you? Okay. Come on.
I also have testimony from Larissa.
Here you go. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm Alexis Saltmer Bergman, a local artist, educator, and advocacy coordinator with the Clean Air Council, but I'm here tonight because I'm also a new resident of the area. I live in Regent Square. Yeah. Thank you, everybody. I grew up in Endicott, New York, a post-industrial river valley where IBM was founded. From a young age, I witnessed and experienced the complexities surrounding labor rights and environmental disaster due to corporate abuse of land and community, and I see many parallels of environmental injustice here in Allegheny County as I did growing up. I am here to state for the record that we all deserve better. I can't open my windows because the chemical smell in the mornings and at night is so strong that I've experienced headaches. I've been unable to breathe, and I have felt physically ill. We, as residents of Allegheny County, deserve and have the right to clean air. The DEP and local elected officials need to hold corporations operating in our state accountable to our environmental health and well-being. It's companies like U.S. Steel, which make clean air inaccessible to residents of our Commonwealth, denying us our state's constitutional right under Article 1, Section 27. We and future generations are being denied our constitutional right to clean air. How are you, in your positions of power, going to show up for the community and going to work on behalf of the people and the environments in this area? So, like, please do come visit these folks. Thank you for your time.
Mackenzie, Phoebe, Sean, Kiem, Diana, and Gavin? Sean passes, too. Okay.
I'm Mackenzie McFarland, resident in Greenfield. Also, I guess I have to disclose this. I work for Cometica U.S. Silicone in Monroeville, and I'm a member of Sunrise Movement Pittsburgh. We have, like, small, you know, minor source permit, permit, well, minor source permit in Monroeville, but I just want to say, like, thank you all for voting yes on this, but it probably should have taken a lot less time to do this, if we're being honest, guys, and there's a whole lot more that we can be doing. You know, I work in a pilot plant where I'm making silica every day, so we have a permit, right? And, like, I'm breathing in higher concentrations where I work than what you guys are breathing in, and I'm here fighting for you guys because nobody should have to breathe this stuff in. And beyond that, you know, it's not helping workers at all to be delaying this. It's not helping anybody except the executives of U.S. Steel, Nippon, whatever you want to call it. It's only helping the executives, guys. So, like, the delay on this, I don't understand. We can be doing so much more to help workers, so much more to fight for green infrastructure in this county and, like, pushing U.S. Steel, Nippon, pushing all of these polluters to invest in green technology and transition away from what they're doing. They can make the investments. You just have to push them to do it because they're just worried about the executives' bottom line and not anybody else, not the workers, not us. So, anything you can do to push them further beyond this, please do, because this is just, like, people are saying, holding up our constitutional rights. It's, all it is, is, like, following the law right now. So, there's so much more that you can do for us, for future generations in this county, young people in this county, so thank you, but please do more.
Thank you. I'm Phoebe Reese. I'm a volunteer with Climate Reality Project Pittsburgh in southwestern Pennsylvania. I'm on the staff of the Breathe Project, and I'm here in my personal capacity as an O'Hara Township resident. Thank you, Anita Pritzio. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. We, thank you for being a champion of our health and our children's future because of many people have said here, "There's a reason the air quality program is embedded in the Health Department." It's, air molecules are nice. You know, maybe you're a chemist and you like oxygen. It's for itself, but we like it because we breathe it, and it's, we need it to survive. And it's a tragedy. You know, I've missed a lot of dinners with my kids, as I'm sure many, you know, people have, this is fun, but, you know, we're here because we care. This whole room, like, an applause to the room. Look how many people have turned out. For months, many people coming, many times, how many people came from more than an hour away? Probably several, multiple times. So, this is democracy in action. This is civic engagement, and it's exciting to see, and thank you for addressing the needs, the data, the testimony, and, you know, in some ways, you can think of yourselves as curing cancer tonight because there are gonna be some cases of cancer that won't happen when our air quality laws are enforced and upheld, our rights to breathe. Maybe we'll have someday when they can close the asthma clinics and the schools because there won't be so many kids who have asthma, which is not genetically inherited. So, when, we all want prosperity, and if you think about the vision of prosperity, what a prosperous community looks like, people are healthy, and prosperity and health go hand in hand. So, thank you. We really appreciate it, and thanks to everyone here. All right?
Thank you.
My name is Gavin Neal. I'm a resident of Gibsonia, PA, and also coming from Sunrise Movement Pittsburgh. So, I'll just kind of pop a lot of the people have been saying. Thank you for, hopefully, passing the air permitting fees for Allegheny County residents and our environment. This is better for our air quality as well, for our climate, and as we are aware of right now, there are a lot of climate disasters and things of that that have happened. So, this is pushing us in a better direction, and I hope, hopefully, this will be one of many more of helping corporations that overpollute be properly punished for their actions, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Carl and Suzanne? Carl and Suzanne?
First, I'd like to thank y'all for letting me speak. I am a resident of Clerton. I've been a resident of Clerton for over 30 years. This is very hard for me because I, growing up, wound up getting cancer, not once, but twice. I live close to the mill. I work with children, and when the explosion happened, we felt it all the way up to the school. That says a lot. That says a lot. My grandbaby was born in 2016. She was born. Her air quality now is affected because she has asthma. She has asthma and it could have been prevented if the mills was accountable for what they did. I don't want the mill to close because there's opportunity for people to still have jobs. I want them to be accountable for what they done. My parents are gone. My mom had cancer. My dad. Well, I lost a lot of loved ones and seen other ones pass because of this mill, because they don't want to do nothing, because they want to rush it under the rug and feed their pockets and not help the kids and the environments in the city. I'm tired. And I'm not an advocate or anything. I got on 412 Justice because I'm tired. And if it takes my last breath that I can possibly breathe, I walk around with an inhaler like it's a charm, like it's an Apple Watch, where I shouldn't have. I should still be able to go up steps, take a breath. I can't, I had surgery to cut my throat open to remove a mess that was hugely connected to my vocal cords where I couldn't speak. So we need this for people that goes through this and thrive through this, and I'm glad y'all voted, but it shouldn't took this long. It shouldn't even took these many years. It shouldn't have because we're fighting for our kids. I'm somebody's child. I'm somebody's child. I have children that I want to see grow up, get married, have dogs, cats, and everything else. I want them to see them go to college, and my grandbaby, I'm raising my grandbaby, who has now had asthma problems, which wound up with asthma. It's just a non-ongoing thing. Because she's having problems and she's itching and can't catch her breath, and it's just a non-ending thing. Enough, when is enough going to be enough? When is, is y'all going to think it could be my kids? It could have been my grandkids. We need all y'all's support, and I'm tearing up your property. But we need you. We love you, and we're glad you said yes.
Thank you.
I'm standing in for Suzy. My name is Pamela Lee, and I currently live in Clerton, PA. I've been there six years plus. I was born and I was raised as a child in the North Bradlock, Bradlock area. I returned as a young adult to raise my children there because this was home. Never realizing I was, the effects of the Edgar Thomas works would have on my family. I lived so close to the place, I could hear the workers talking on the loudspeaker at night. I seen dirty ash in the doorjams of my house and dirt ashes on my car in the morning. I knew this was something like a warning sign then that there was some sign of pollution. My son Jeremiah was diagnosed with asthma, ADHD, and PPD, which is pervasive perspective development, and autism. All these due to the pollution I was inhaling while pregnant. And that's, studies now show this due to research. You know, so that was one, one way. Now I'm in Clerton. I wake up to, I wake up to smoke-filled mornings and funky egg, raw egg-smelling air. It's, it's terrible. As recent as August 11th, 2025, of course, everybody heard that night there was a big explosion. It shook the community and left our ears so bad, everyone was warned to stay in the house. Shame. That's why I am in support of this, and I'm so glad you are too. But this is what I have to say. I have to run air filters in my house on a daily basis. So the polluters can pay their fair share to give the Health Department more ways to monitor the air pollution, that's one. Two, it should be used to promote better checks on their equipment. And three, to provide filters for Mon Valley residents, all Mon Valley residents. And I think, you know, the assault on the Mon Valley community is, is at hand. And so we must make the polluters accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carl Kerner. I'm a resident of Beachview and an engineer for Clean Air Council. If you know anything about engineers, I don't want to be up here right now. But I have to be up here right now, and I ask that you please listen to the testimony of residents before me. And I'm here to state that I support the permit fee increase that will help fully fund ACHD so they will have the ability to properly regulate pollution in the county. I've been working on air pollution issues in Allegheny County for over 11 years. In that time, I've commented on numerous permits from all over the county to any account. I'm one of the people regularly giving trouble to the Health Department. So sorry for that, but I'm also not sorry. I've watched ACHD accomplish great things, from substantially decreasing their permit backlog to holding large polluters accountable in the wake of non-compliance negligence. I've also watched the dust pile up on my air filter at home, smelled the sulfur in the air on a still calm night, and woken up to the smell lingering in the inversion into the morning light. Some say that's just how Pitt, this, this is just how Pittsburgh is, has always been. I'm here to say that it does not have to be that way. I'm here to say that there is still more work to be done. EPA agrees. In order to effectively manage the air permitting program, ACHD must hire more staff. A 2017 audit of the county's Title V program stated, quote, "Current permitting workload exceeds existing staffing levels," end quote. There are still outstanding permits from that audit that have not been issued in over 30 years. To hire and to keep staff to review and enforce permits, ACHD must be funded. It is your responsibility as residents, as council members, as people who breathe the same air we all do today, to make sure this work is done. Funding ACHD through this fee increase is a necessary step ensuring that this happens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. We'll now have approval of minutes 13733-25.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2025 regular meeting of council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Presentation of appointments. Both of these appointments being presented this evening are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read both of them at this time. Hearing none, go ahead.
13716-25 is approving the appointment of Clarence J. Hopson to the Allegheny County Personnel Board for a term to be effective through December 31st, 2028, sponsored by the Chief Executive. And 13717-25 is approving the appointment of Dora Walmsley to the Allegheny County Hospital Development Authority, the Allegheny County Higher Education Building Authority, the Allegheny County Residential Finance Authority, and the Allegheny County Authority for Improvements in Municipalities for a term to be effective through April 24th, 2029, also sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Unfinished business. Committee on Health and Human Services for the second reading, 13228-24.
An ordinance to the council of the county of Allegheny ratifying amendments to Section 210562, asbestos abatement applicability, federal requirements, notices, and permits, and Section 210907, penalties, fines, and interest to the Allegheny County Health Department, rules and regulations, Article 21, air pollution control, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Klein?
Thank you, Mr. President. At its council meeting on December 5th, 2024, that's still this century, the Committee on Health and Human Services, in considering this ordinance, affirmatively recommended its approval by council. I'm here this evening to ask for, to make a motion to approve it, and I'm asking for a second.
Second.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded. Anyone wishing to make comment at this point in time?
Yeah, sure. I think most of us do. That's a yes.
Come on, Nick. That's a yes. They want the vote. Go ahead.
Well, I'd still like to make a comment. Just want to thank everybody for coming in. I mean, it's been a long process, and just want to make sure that you all realize that being a council, I guess, we had to make sure things are correct. And the rub came last year, now this is my personal, not, I'm not talking about them. In 2024, we, we had the largest tax increase in the history of this county. Two weeks later, we were asked to change the fee structure, and that seemed to be a bit of a rub. And we straightened it all out, and here we are today to support you and this county and our budget specifically. So thank you much. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bedkowski, Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Mr. Embrasia.
Yes.
Yeah, Mike.
Ms. Filiagi.
Mr. Fatoulas.
Definitely yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
For the Mon Valley, yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm just kidding. Yes.
Be careful. Ice 13, no zero, the bill passes.
What a jagoff.
So we're going to move on to new business ordinances. Wait, wait, wait. Still got to do 13229. Yeah, that's, that's a problem. 13229-24.
Resolution to the council of the county of Allegheny ratifying air quality permit application and permit fee increase is approved by the Allegheny County Health Department pursuant to the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Sections 50516E, 50517G, 50521D, 50523F, 50525E2C, 50528A7, 50548A4A6, 50548B4C, 50549A3, and 50549C8HD, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Klein?
Thank you, Mr. President. At its committee meeting on December 5th, 2024, the Committee on Health and Human Services considered this resolution and at its conclusion made an affirmative recommendation that it be considered and supported by council. At this time, I offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Discussion. Councilmember Nakarati-Chapkus.
Thank you, President Katina. I, I just want to, I promise to give a very brief history lesson because I suspect a lot of folks don't know this. Allegheny County joined the city of Pittsburgh in 1949 by adopting a county smoke control ordinance. In 1957, the Allegheny County Health Department took over the duties of the city Smoke Control Bureau and assumed responsibility for air pollution control for the entire county. In 1960, our county particulate control regulations were the strongest in the country based on necessity. County Health Department air quality regulations are older than the Clean Air Act. Yeah, right? So, and as was stated in the comments, in 2018, as you all had heard, the EPA conducted a program evaluation of the Title V program and concluded that the current permitting workload exceeds existing staffing levels. So frankly, this needed to be done years ago, but we are here today and progress is being done and moving forward. So as an environmental health professional, I can share that I am very proud of this vote this evening, and I promise that we will continue to do better for all of the residents of Allegheny County.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else. Jared, please take the rule.
On the motion approved, Mr. Bedkowski, Mr. Bada.
Yes.
Mr. Embrasia.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi. Mr. Fatoulas.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Ice 13, no zero, the bill passes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. If you, if you don't want to stay, you're more than a tot, you, you can leave at this point.
Yeah, get the hell out of here.
Oh, we're not done.
Okay, that's fine. So we only have a few more things done for the, for the meeting. New business ordinances resolutions, 13734-25.
Mr. President.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, mending existing fee schedule of various rates and fees established by county departments, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Guess what? Today's the first day of the Pittsburgh National Airport, the new airport. Congratulations to Allegheny County. That's what I wanted to say. Well, it is today.
New business ordinances resolutions, 13734-25.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, mending the existing fee schedule of various rates and fees established by county departments, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
That will go to Budget and Finance, notification of contracts.
13735-25 is a communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of October 2025.
Is there a motion to receive and file? Motion has been made in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We'll now have public comment on general items. So Chris Scott? Non-agend items. Chris Scott, are you here?
Chris Scott?
No. Len Young? Len Young? Final call. Len Young? Benj or Bernard?
Are you a student? Are you probably not? No, there's only four because the ones in the back are like staying.
If you could, if you could move into the hallway if you're, if you're done, so the rest of the commenters can speak.
Sorry, Bernard.
He's here, he's right, he's trying to get to, make it to the podium.
Thank you for being patient. Thank you.
I was a sniper in the infantry. I could be patient on that. Ladies and gentlemen of Allegheny County Council, friends of the game preserve, and any public that's in attendance, I came today to speak not only about the beauty of South Park, but also the responsibility we carry to protect it. At the heart of the responsibility lies a need for a dedicated bison steward, as you guys call it, an animal keeper, I think, from what I understand. And this is recommended by the National Bison Association. This is someone whose knowledge, patience, and skill endure the safety of both the animals and the people who care for them. These animals are not just symbols of strength, they are powerful, unpredictable, and demand respect. Furthermore, there is one person who has been working there, who has earned their respect and was just recently removed from his position. This is the same attendant who also has raised the baby peacock from an egg, nurturing it until it has become part of the park's community. The same devotion is what makes him the only person capable of gathering the bison safely into the squeeze pen for vet visits. Without him, the herd cannot be adequately managed. Without him, the game preserve risks chaos. And to follow up on that chaos, the baby peacock now, since he's been gone for over a week, has not been fed in four days. And now there's a new cyst that somebody would have recognized on one of the bison. And I have pictures to back all this stuff up. And a lot of you probably have never been to the bison, and I understand that because county's big, but there's a lot that you can gain from the, the bison. A bison steward must interact with diverse stakeholders, the public, politicians of all levels, multiple communities, promoting cooperation, education, and commitment towards the common goal of ecological conservation. The role of the community not, cannot be overestimated. Promoting active participation in responsible management initiatives can strengthen the sense of ownership and responsibility towards the ecosystem in which we live. However, this is also not just about the bison. It's also about the balance of the entire ecosystem. Recently, forestry was stripped away to make room for new projects. Recently, forestry was stripped away to make room for new projects, and the deer population suffered. Their cover vanished, their foods diminished, and with them, countless smaller creatures lost their homes. Every tree removed was not just lumber, it was shelter, it was life. So, in this whole entire thing, that we look at this, you go around the park, it's dotted with old pavilions, which are neglected and in poor condition. Instead of tearing something down, an ecosystem, why not just restore or replace the current existing ones that we have? Ultimately, it is imperative to redefine our relationship with the natural world through the eyes of management. We are charged not only with the noble duty of protecting these magnificent animals, but also restoring the ecosystem that support them.
Wrap it up, please.
I will, yes. Basically, you could start this all, though, because from what I understand, tomorrow, there's a hearing with the union. If you guys could get ahold of somebody to let them know that they should keep the guy on, on, I guess it's the Labor's Union is who has the animal keeper, and tell them to reinstate him back into his position. Because, like I say, they're being unattended, and it's terrible. Also, if anybody would ever like to learn how this county could profit from the bison, find me, because you literally have a moneymaker that you don't even know about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Paul? You here, Paul? Paul's not up here. I'm not sure, I think the rest of these are all spam, so at this point, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries, thank you, everyone.